Mr. President.
Here, please stand for the pledge of invitation by Councilmember Chris Jerem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, just a good news story this week, and there should be a proclamation coming, I hope we can all sign, to congratulate the UNO hockey team for their first ever trip to the Final Four, the national hockey tournament for NCAA. It's a wonderful accomplishment, and they happen to be on the western edge of District Three, so, to whatever that entitles me to brag about them, I'm happy to do that and hopefully can do a proclamation congratulating them. So, here's to UNO hockey this year.
Frozen Four.
City Clerk certifies publication daily record on April 10th notes for a review council regular city council meeting April 14th, 2015, a current Cock Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law, may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of the issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices.
Zoning ordinance on final rig and plant board attachments, item number five through nine, it's one case. Five is ordinance to rezone property located northeast of 40th and Pacific Streets from R6, low-density multifamily residential district and general industrial district, to R5, urban family residential district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Six is ordinance to adopt a parking overlay district to approve a parking plan. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Seven is resolution of Plymouth flat entitled "Marsy Edition" is hereby accepted. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Eight is the resolution of the replat transmitted here with entitled "Marsy Edition" is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Nine is the subdivision agreement with the University of Nebraska Board of Regents is hereby approved.
Public hearings on items number five through nine were held on April 7th. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I just want to have John Coolidge come down and confirm that there is now an agreement with the developer on this project and Parks Department to install the ramp on the west side of the Villa Lobos parking lot to the Field Club Trail and from Mason Street to what we'll call the Villa Lobos parking lot on the east side.
John Coolidge, 14710 West Dodge Road, Lamphray Nielsen Associate, here on behalf of the F.C. Kent. Thank you, Councilman Jerem. Again, as you remember from last week, we were here, and the proposal last week included the connector trail. Here's Leavenworth Street off the picture. Here's Pacific Street. Here's the Field Club. Here's the two new parking areas. So, we had proposed the connector from the Field Club Trail to the west to 40th Street. The issue at hand was the connection to the east up this 10 or 15-foot of slope. So, we coordinated with Brook Bench and Dennis Pires from the Parks Department, they were very helpful, and they have agreed to allow the connection. Again, it would be more of a serpentine connection, provided that UNMC maintain the trail and pay for the trail, and also provide a access easement across their parking lot so that it's always pedestrian connection to the neighborhood to the east. So, those terms were all agreeable to the university and to the Parks Department, as I understand them, and they will be entering a formal agreement for those. Thank you. With that, I would move to approve.
Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Five through nine are passed seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an I place on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council meeting following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order. The consent agenda resolutions, item number 28 is being removed.
The public hearings on agenda items number 10 through 27 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. See, none. Public hearings are closed. Motion, a second. One follow-up question from this morning, it's Mr. Curtis on number 24. We discussed how this was a clerical error and repeal the change order that wasn't necessary. You were checking to see where that money returns back to?
I'm sorry, Steve Curtis, City Finance. I think this may have been a larger misunderstanding in that back in the end of September or October, the police department put in a complete, put in a complete record, or, I'm sorry, a complete resolution asking for 3.4 million in total for radios, and in there, they had later found out that as the price of radios dropped, they had enough excess capacity to put the cruiser radios under that same order. They believed they were being transparent by in February putting this out to further designate that some of that 3.4 million was going to the cruiser radios. They since found out that it wasn't necessary, and then they later decided to rescind it just because it, for reasons that we're talking today, became confusing. So, there wasn't any additional. It's part of the original 3.4 million they had approved back in September.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion, a second. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Mr. President. Yes.
Ten through 27 are adopted seven to zero. Item number 28, resolution to the attached agreement with the National Safety Council of Nebraska to provide for a program of public education regarding fireworks safety is hereby approved. We have a request from the administration to delay this over four weeks. And continue the public hearing.
Second. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Mr. President. Yes.
Twenty-eights laid over four weeks, and public hearings continued. Resolutions, item number 29, resolution to the attached Midtown Hotel at Saddle Creek and Dodge Tax Incentive Financing Reinvestment Project Plan for a site located in the southeast corner of Saddle Creek Road and Dodge Street, providing the demolition of the existing structure and construction of a new three-to-five-story hotel with 102 guest rooms and internal parking structure, with the city's participation through allocation of TIF is hereby approved.
Public hearing on number 29 is today. Proponents, please. Ms. Hadley.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Before you is a proposal for a Midtown Hotel, and this is in response to a growing need for hospitality services in the Midtown area due a lot to the expansions at UNMC, as well as medical research initiatives that are happening in that area. This proposal plans to redevelop this site, which is outlined in blue, that fronts Dodge Street, Saddle Creek, and then Douglas as well. It's the former site of the Premier Bank, it's been vacant for a little while. As you can see, a lot of this has been used, a lot of the site has been used for drive access to this bank, so, a very underutilized site. The site will also acquire this particular property to make room for a 102-room hotel. It will be three-to-five stories. The site slopes from north to south, there's a very steep slope from north to south, so, on the north side of the building, it will be about three stories, on the south side about five stories. There will be a dedication of the alleyway, excuse me, this north-south, excuse me, this is the east-south, east-west alley, and then a vacation of that, and then a dedication of this north-south alley. The entrance to the building will be from Douglas Street, which is here, into the alley, and then the front entrance of the building is here. And I have a few renderings. This is probably the better one. So, this is the north elevation, so, from Dodge Street, so, from here up is the building. This is the east elevation, so, that's basically on, I believe, from the alleyway. South elevation, and then the west elevation. The project does ask for about 2.5 million, a little over 2.5 million in TIF for TIF-eligible expenses, and the investment of the project is a little over 15 million. It does meet our TIF guidelines and community development laws, so with that, I'd ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-nine is adopted seven to zero. Item number 30, resolution to attach Millard Lumber Tax Incentive Financing Redeveloped Project Plan for the site generally bonded by Millard Avenue on the northwest-south 134th Street and south 132nd Street on the northeast Q Street, on the northeast and south of 135th Street on the southwest, which proposes the construction of a modern mixed-use development consisting of multifamily housing units, office and retail space and parking, recommending the city participate, so the allocation of TIF is hereby approved.
Public hearing on number 30 is today. Proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Before you is a project, I think, long awaited in this particular community, the Millard Lumber Tax Increment Financing Project. You may recall, last year, we brought forth the CRA designation, which was widely accepted with the idea that this site, the former Millard Lumber site, would be redeveloped. It was, of course, in its heyday, a very active and productive site, being the Millard Lumber site. When Millard Lumber moved to their current location in 2008, 2009, the site has sat vacant, has been a blight on the community, and what is proposed is to take the entire site, which is outlined in blue, this is Q Street, just to give some coordination, Millard Avenue, 134th, 135th, south 134th and 135th Streets. So, the idea is to take this entire site, completely redevelop it. There will be a lot of infrastructure involved with this, rehabbing, repairing, new infrastructure involved with this particular site, and create a modern mixed-use development. It will include 338 market-rate family housing units with related amenities. There will be over 19,000 square feet of retail and proposed over 41,000 square feet of office space. I have a rendering here to give you a better glimpse, if you can maybe widen that shot. So, what you'll see here is Q Street, and in blue are where the commercial buildings will be flanking the entire site, and then in the dark orange, that is where the residential is. Parking is contained underneath, as well as on-site surface parking, and then off-street parking, particularly along 135th Street. The plan is to repair as much of the brick pavers as possible along 135th Street, and then to provide connection, connectivity along Potwin and Cotner Street. So, completely revitalizing and bringing a whole new form of life, a whole new community into this particular area. I know the developer, I believe the developer is here, and representative of the developer is here, but I know this is a wide, has been widely accepted in the community as a great opportunity for not just Millard, but for Omaha as well. Here is a few renderings. And this is from the Millard Avenue, looking at the site from Millard Avenue, so this is where the retailing and commercial would be. This is looking at one of the buildings, and this is a prototype of all of the multifamily type buildings that would be at this site. This is just another angle looking at the site, and I know you've seen many of these probably in the paper as well as before you in the past, and then just looking from Q Street. So, again, this project is a $54 million investment. It proposes a little over 8.8 million, close to 8.9 million in TIF for TIF-eligible expenses, with a lot of infrastructure, a lot of site improvements that will be involved, and with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bridget, I have a question. You said earlier, this has been a long-awaited goal or task. How many TIF projects have happened in the old Millard area?
Zero.
Zero.
Correct. This is the first.
This is the first, and just to give you an idea, I was at the VFW Saturday, and they had, somebody's even offered to buy there, they see the value of this, so this is just going to generate just a lot of interest in that area.
Absolutely.
And somebody offered, they wanted to know if they'd sell their building, you know, so, I want to thank you for what you've done to help this through the process, appreciate that.
Appreciate it. Appreciate everyone's help.
Is that a motion? Yes.
Second.
Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty is adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing agenda, item number 31, shall be held on third reading. Ordinance is on second reading. Item 32, ordinance declaring necessity of acquiring private property with the purpose of repairing the Pershing Lift Station.
Public hearing on number 32 is today. Are there any proponents? See, none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 33, ordinance permitting redevelopment tax center financing loan agreement with 1005 North 14th LLC to the Rochester apartment tax center financing redevelopment project plan located at 1005, 15 North 14th Street, which contemplates adaptive reuse of the historic known Hay Exchange Building within the Nicholas Street Historic District into residential housing.
Public hearing on number 33 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item number 34, ordinance to amend sections 30, 81, 82, 91, 113, 114, 118, 136, to add a new section 30, 98, 99, 101, 100, 101, 137, 138, 139, to create a system whereby police department can track the pawn and salvage of copper and other metals and goods in order to reduce the theft of such items. A is of communications and support.
Public hearing on number 34 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Captain Kerry Newman, Omaha Police Department. I oversee the Criminal Investigations Bureau, but includes the Pawn and Salvage Unit. The Omaha Police Department is in support of this ordinance, in particular to go from a, kind of a handwritten tracking system of pawn and salvage cards to an online web-based program. With me today is Sergeant Tina Jenham. She is a seven-year officer and now sergeant who works in the pawn unit. She is our expert on pawn and salvage and the process and procedures, so I'll have her here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tina Jenham, and I am with Omaha Police Department's Pawn Unit. We are a proponent of this ordinance that's submitted today. It's the desire of the Omaha Police Department to use a web-based program to collect data from pawn, salvage, and eventually the second-hand shops. This program will be more user-friendly to alert us in identifying property that was either reported, missing, or stolen. It's going to provide us better legible information and data that we collect. For instance, we do have serial numbers that do come in on handwritten cards, and sometimes those can be deciphered differently depending on the person who's reading them. Such a serial number, sometimes people mistake the number one for the letter L or the number zero for the letter O, which really throws off our system. A web-based program will be, allow us to get items that are close to that serial number, so that will alert us to more hits, which will enable us to find more stolen items. Also, it's going to reduce our storage. Right now, we have to store the paper cards that are brought into us, and there are hundreds of thousands of cards. Right now, I'm holding on to 600,000 cards for storage, so that will eliminate some room in the Omaha Police Department to let us use that room for something different. And also, the web-based program, if we go to that, will allow more officers to use the program to identify items that are stolen, as opposed to just the people in the pawn unit. So, we're hoping that this information will be used department-wide and used by more officers.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Good afternoon, John Determan, Victory Boxing Club Community Center. Just a minute of your time to talk about this, as we, as everybody in this room knows, the theft of copper and different items that can be pawned off and used to scrap has hit every area of the city, being at parking lots or vacant houses, or houses under construction, or private nonprofit organizations. We have Victory Boxing Club and Community Center have been hit three times. Once for an individual air conditioner, we had to replace for $2,500. Then a commercial air conditioner, on another date, that cost us $7,500 to replace, and on a third date, a van, catalytic converter off our van, both the van and the commercial air conditioner were inside an eight-foot fence. We have video of the subject that cut off the converter, and he's able to do it within two minutes, you know, so this is a crime that can be committed in an open parking lot in broad daylight within two minutes. For catalytic converters from any car to any vehicles between $500 and $800 for people to replace, and, you know, this is a type of crime that affects every part of the city. There's no part of the city that hasn't been hit with some type of crime of catalytic converters or copper from construction or houses or what have you. So, we believe that we need more accountability, more procedures, and more bite in this to help the police departments fight this crime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Determan, and thank you for your program. We think it's a good one. Other proponents?
Good afternoon, I'm Paulette Genton, I'm with the Universal College of Healing Arts in Florence here in Omaha. I just wanted to add to that, we've been hit, three of our commercial units were taken. It's not only the cost involved, that was about $15,000, but the fact that you have to shut your business down until you can find somebody to come out and replace those units. And we've been hit all over that area last summer, I mean, the dentist next door, the Notre Dame Sisters, St. Philip's Mary, we were all hit pretty hard. So, anything that can be done to rectify this would be great. The community is very concerned. We had a meeting early last fall, probably over 100 people came to our school from the neighborhood, concerned about that. The police department were there, it was a very informative meeting, people were pretty excited about something could be done, so I really applaud this to happen in our community and hope it happens, so, thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Dan Rock, I'm a lawyer here in town, 9290 West Dodge Road, and I represent Saul's Jewelry and Loan, they're the largest pawn shops, the most pawn shops here in Omaha. They're in favor of this ordinance, and think that it should apply as well to second-hand good dealers. Right now, this ordinance will not change Saul's operation by much at all. They already electronically transfer the pawns and purchases that come into their store every day to the police office, and where second-hand good dealers, even though they have a license, are not under that same requirement. And the difference between a pawn store and a second-hand good dealer is pawn stores take in goods and hand out loans, where the second-hand good dealers just purchase things. Now, these pawn TV shows are helpful because it educates people how a pawn store works, but you see those TV shows, and you realize you can come into a pawn store and either sell it or pawn it, either one. And so, it would be really easy to put a wall down the middle of your store and say, on this side, we're a pawn shop, we give out loans, and on this side, we're a second-hand good dealers, and we just buy things. And on this side, we don't have to report to the police what's coming in. And so, that's why the second half of this ordinance needs to happen, and I've sent some sample ordinances from Indiana and Philadelphia that I think are helpful, but you can limit it to certain things that you're looking for, electronics and second-hand gun purchasers and bikes and jewelry. So, with that caveat, they're supportive of this ordinance.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Steve Kohler with Mid City Jewelry and Loan. We're all for this, too. We just need to get the second-hand stores on the same page as we are and have a level playing field, because what this is looking for is for it make the police, make it for the police easier to find stolen items, and the pawn shops have been doing this for 50 years. You know, we're highly regulated, we can take the fingerprints down, have ID, you know, government picture ID. The second-hand stores don't even require government picture ID, they just write down a name, what the item is, and how much they gave for it. That's it. Now, they keep a ledger of it, but nobody comes checks on that ledger. They don't, nobody's ever looked at the ledger. They, they're supposed to hold it for five days, it doesn't make any difference, because nobody ever comes and looks at that ledger. So, they're, if a bad guy was going to go bring some jewelry in, they would bring it to a second-hand store as opposed to bringing it to a pawn shop. Because all pawn shops, they're, we got fingerprints, we ask for government picture ID, they're usually on camera, everything else. So, we see very, very little stolen items. I had eight stolen items last year, the whole year, and that was mostly from roommates, a family member, things like that, you know. It wasn't where somebody broke in somewhere and took some items. So, all the things that, you know, it's very easy for the bad guy to go to a second-hand store and get money for the items and not get caught. Simple, very simple. They don't have to go across state lines, they don't have to go to Kansas City, Chicago, anything like that, they can just do it right here in Omaha, because there is no regulation on them, and it's very easy for them to do it. So, how simple is that? So, you're, you know, you're looking for your mother's ring that somebody broke into your house and took, they're not going to find it, because they're not going to bring it to us. They're going to bring it to a second-hand store, that's got to hold it for five days, and after five days, they can do whatever they want with it. You come in and ask them on the sixth day, I don't know what happened to it, I sold it, I melted it, I, whatever, took it home, whatever, I don't even know where it's at. They can say that, you know, so, it's just too easy for them, and we are highly regulated, so it's not changing our business at all, just like he said for Saul's. It's not changing us at all, you know. I mean, I'm glad you're doing it for the salvage guys, but you need to add the second-hand stores, so these police officers here can find the items that they're looking for. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Ms. Elders.
Hello, I'm Kelly Elder from 7710 Lake Street, and I'm president of Benson Garden Neighborhood Association, a member of our Citizen Patrol, and a member of our Neighborhood Watch Group. I'm here today as a proponent of this ordinance, and as a representative of our neighborhood, our homeowners share a great interest in and support the amendments to this ordinance that will help deter burglaries, provide an enhanced ability to recover stolen items when possible, and provide an efficient way for the police to return stolen property to rightful owners. We greatly appreciate the cooperation of the pawn shops in this endeavor, since many are located in and around our neighborhood. We, and we also thank you for your support of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your new neighborhood association, we appreciate that, too. Any other proponents here today? Any opponents?
Val Gomez, Cooter Enterprises, 902 Gray Street. All 50 states now have laws requiring scrap dealers to keep records of certain sales. Many go further, including Nebraska, to include mandated video records of sellers, lists and pictures of items being sold, fingerprints, now tag and hold periods are being brought up, payment restrictions, and more. None of these practices have shown to put any dent in crime, and that's from the- And that's from the Institute of, or excuse me, the ISRI website direct from them. Often, it is believed that legislation is the answer to solve problems. It is believed that by placing further restrictions on recyclers like myself, it'll act as a solution to reducing these metal thefts. I have no issues with the proposal for an electronic recycling system or the tracking system, but other aspects of this amendment I have issues with. Mr. Brown has provided me with another amendment that addresses some of the commercial clients' aspects of it, which takes some of it, I guess, away. The five-day hold period, for one, is a big issue for me. This amendment will not work for a number of reasons. The intent of this ordinance is to deter property crime and copper theft, increase arrests, and to increase the likelihood that these stolen materials be returned to their owners. In seven years of owning a salvage yard, I have yet to see one piece of metal be returned to its rightful owner. When the metal comes into us, it is in no way, shape, or form that it was in when it was stolen. I would like to ask some of the larger recyclers around here, too, how much metal has actually been recovered and returned to their rightful owners. I know of one officer who works stolen metals in Omaha. I know Tina also works different stuff, but I know of one officer who comes to the scrapyards and checks us out on a weekly basis. In this legislation, you're requiring that we tag and hold items for a five-day period. Are any other resources going to be allocated to come and actually look at this stuff that we tag and hold? Or are we just going through the motions so, you know, you guys feel like you've done something? I feel it would better serve the public to look at preventing theft than actually reacting to it. This legislation will not stop theft for, with several other recyclers, some less than one mile away in Iowa, who none of these ordinances apply to. So, for somebody to drive one mile away, that's not going to prevent them from stealing. So, this is a toothless ordinance. I, as a recycler, try to run a business that provides jobs, pays taxes, and provides a service that keeps a greener earth. Recycling is necessary. Please do not legislate recyclers out of business. What has proven to be more effective than toothless legislation is when there is a commitment and coordination between law enforcement and recyclers. By being partners with recyclers, it has statistically been proven to reduce thefts and make more arrests. In conclusion, I just feel that the city would be better served by adding dedicated personnel for metal theft rather than passing ordinances that just cause more paperwork, more, I guess, more burden on the recyclers, and it does nothing for the theft. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Other opponents today?
My name is Jennifer Jones, and I also own a metal recycling center here in Omaha. As many of you may remember, I recently just went through the whole permitting process. Again, we moved from 85th and Blondo to 85th and Maple, and it'll be a year, this Friday actually, that we've been relocated at our new facility, but we've also been in business for 15 years prior to that. I'm here to voice my serious concerns on this ordinance. Since expanding my business, kind of to touch on what Val just said, you know, I've hired additional staff and added a lot of tax dollar revenues to the city of Omaha. I have met the need for a community's honest, convenient, and welcoming environment to recycle metal products in the heart of Omaha. I worry with these ineffective, burdensome ordinances, I may not be able to keep my business in its current location. Essentially, I may have to relocate my business out of the Omaha area to a surrounding community to be allowed to move material in a feasible manner. I would love to invite all of you and as well as anyone in the Omaha Chamber to tour my facility to better showcase how a metal recycler really functions. But again, I argue that we've not had adequate time to provide feedback to the council on this issue. One of my core issues with this ordinance is that it groups metal recycling centers with pawn shops. A metal recycling center is not a retail store. We are so far from resembling a pawn shop operation. Pawn shops are purchasing household goods, tools, and items from the general public. Oftentimes, these items have a unique brand or some identifiable serial number, as they just mentioned, which makes tracking stolen goods or merchandise much easier for law enforcement. The metal products we purchase don't have serial numbers or otherwise identifiable features. As Val touched on earlier, the metal products, let's say, an air conditioner that gets stolen, for example, they're not bringing in that complete air conditioner. They're stripping it out. They're bringing in the copper piping, the coil, the motor, the compressor. There's no way of identifying that specific motor as coming out of this specific air conditioner. Moreover, we are purchasing the large majority of our metal products from industrial and commercial accounts, not the general public. I see that the updated ordinance that we received from Pete does exclude some of those commercial and industrial accounts. But again, I still take issue with the five-day hold period. We take in thousands of pounds of material every day from all of our customers. Requiring a five-day hold period on these items isn't feasible for an operation of my size. Just to give you an example to illustrate this case, I might have one customer, an electrical account, for an example, bring in 6,000 pounds of copper. We purchase that material based on where the market value of copper is on that exact day. The markets move every day. We could see swings as much as 15 to 20 cents in one day. As you can see, over a five-day hold period that the council's proposing, you're basically forcing us to gamble with our livelihood and the livelihood of our employees. I cannot effectively run my business with that handcuff. I need to have the ability to move product freely with the markets without the risk of commodities dropping during this hold period. Additionally, another aspect that could be very damaging for our business is the five-day hold period. We're tying up a lot of money in that just the 6,000 pounds of copper, for example, is worth about $18,000. Clearly, holding on to this material for extended period of time would tie up a great deal of cash flow for our operation. As a result, we run the risk of losing out of money to operate altogether. In short, we feel we have not had enough time for collaboration with Omaha businesses affected by this ordinance. I and other industry leaders are asking for more time to work with the council on finding a feasible and effective solution to crime that is affecting our Omaha area. However, as this ordinance stands now, we are not in support.
Thank you. Other opponents?
I'm David Snyder with Alter Recycling, 2522 North 11th Street here in Omaha. We also are in opposition, as it's written. Alter has 54 yards clear through from the Canadian border to the Gulf of Mexico. And one of our positions that we have to do daily is cover the copper fluctuation, as Jennifer alluded to. And with this, the way it's written today, if we had to hold that five days, and again, mirroring what she's saying, there's instances where we'll see a 50 or 75 cent market swing from, say, a Monday to a Friday. And for us to hold that, that's very costly to our company. And then, we get into the security aspect of it. Again, we're on North 11th Street, and it's what I'd constitute a fairly high crime area. We've had numerous problems. But to show you what we have to try to hold that off, we have a security fence, we have security guards, we have this copper inside a building, and it's also inside an overseas container with a 6,500-pound block in front of it. Now, we move that material every day, so we kind of lessen these and lessen our market exposure. But if you're asking us to hold this five days, you can see where we have all of our copper in one container today. Theoretically, we could have it in five containers, which we don't have room for that in our building, plus we could have tens of thousands of dollars' worth of exposure to our company not being able to cover that position of the copper because we can't really cover it if we still have to hold it. And I'd like to ask how effective the hold laws have been, say, per instance in Lincoln. We have a facility in Lincoln as well, and I checked with the facility manager, and as far as we know, there has not been any arrest tied to our hold system that we have in Lincoln, which is three days, not the five that you're requesting. And the leads online, I think the reporting of that, we really have, okay, as the officer alluded to, she has hundreds of thousands of those cards, but I guess I have to ask, I'm fairly adept on electronics and things, how they work, but how could we ever say that would be more effective to your officers if they have hundreds of thousands of cards now? All of a sudden, now, everything's going to be online electronically filed? How in the world could they ever sort through that? I think that what it serves, this is going to serve just to be a detrimental thing because I like the one-on-one that I have with Bill Fell, even though you only have one officer that's dealing with the salvage industry. At the same time, I know Bill Fell, and if we have a situation, and I think he would help us if he was here to testify that say that we have, Alter has been a very good advocate of trying to lessen these crimes, and anytime we can help him, if he's looking for something, you know, you have a situation, you have an alert that comes out, but we have tried very, very proactively to try to hold those things off. And I'm just saying that I think by doing this, leads online, electronics are a wonderful tool, but I think a lot of times it serves as a disconnect, that interaction where we have with Bill Fell today, and I think we lose a lot of that. And then, you have six, you have hundreds of thousands of cards today you're holding, but where would you actually have and how would you ever search through all those electronic instances we make? And I think as a city in Omaha, there would be thousands per day. There could be. And I just think, one last thing, too, and we go from information, I'm very concerned because we have a lot of proprietary information in our business, and with, we go with this Leads Online, one of the things I read there about them is they have no liability, so if there's a breach, we have a lot of proprietary information that would be out there for anyone to gather that they can, and those are very important to our company. So, we're, today, we're logging and saying that we are in severe opposition to this as written. I think this has been hurried way too fast. We went through the Lincoln proposal, which I was heavily involved in that, and that took up to, I think, over three months for that to pass. And I think this is moving along way too quick. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Good afternoon. My name is David Borsec. I'm employed by Sadoff Iron and Metal Company. We operate a scrap metal recycling facility at 4918 F Street in Omaha. We also have a facility in Lincoln and in the state of Wisconsin. I'm here to speak in opposition to the revision of Chapter 30 of the Omaha Municipal Code as it is currently proposed, and I'd like to keep my comments somewhat brief just to two general provisions. One is the electronic reporting. While it is debatable regarding the effectiveness of electronic reporting, it is essential that vendor liability and the confidentiality of business information be guaranteed. It is incredibly important, one, that there is some kind of performance guarantee by whomever the vendor is, as well as that the information that is gathered and disseminated is only disseminated by law enforcement agencies and not for anybody else's use. Secondly, I'd like to comment on the five-day hold. This provision does not reflect the practices of our business, and it confuses the scrap recycling industry with pawn shops. Our industry has a history of working collaboratively with local law enforcement agencies, prosecutors, and other stakeholders to help craft state, or scrap, craft theft laws. In the state of Nebraska, we work both with the city of Lincoln and the state of Nebraska. Our interactions with the state included members of the Omaha Police Department. We request that you lay this over until, and give the industry an opportunity to discuss with you. We would like to invite you to visit our facilities and see how we conduct our business. I think it's incredibly important that you can understand the nuances, why our business is different from the pawn shop business. I think that if you look at the material that comes in, that it is not distinguishable one from the other. We would also like to suggest that a couple of other areas be addressed. One is how well are the current laws being enforced? What is the arrests? What are the arraignments and prosecutions? Are we enforcing what we have today? Secondly, one of the most important things with scrap theft is timely notification. We had worked this past year with Senator Cook to try to introduce in the state of Nebraska a scrap theft alert system, notification system. It does not appear that it's gained sufficient traction, but this is a free service that's offered by our scrap association where that any reportable crime, any materials theft crime that has a police number can be reported and then sent to scrap dealers to be on the lookout. This is, as I say, is a free service and I think goes along with the understanding that knowledge is power. I saw the proposed amendment, and my observation is that while this was, I think, patterned after the Lincoln ordinance, the Lincoln ordinance, because of their definition of different types of commercial operations, has a provision that also excludes dealer-to-dealer operation. And I do not believe that the way that this is currently read, that this would affect dealer-to-dealer operations. And lastly, but not least, even in our company, we estimate that what it would cost us to put in an additional facility to take, to store the covered material, the material covered under this proposed ordinance, would be anywhere between $900,000 and $300,000. With that, I'd like to thank you very much for the opportunity and certainly be available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Mayor Wesley?
Thank you. President Festerson, members of the Omaha City Council. It's a pleasure to join you today. My name is Don Wesley. I'm here representing ISRI. I have a couple of handouts for you about the Association Institute of Scrap Recyclers Institute. We appreciate that Councilman Festerson did let me know about this a few weeks ago, and it is moving rather fast, so we're trying as quickly as we can to understand what's being proposed, and we do appreciate also the amendment and the effort by Councilman Festerson to work with this. As you've heard, the metal recyclers here in Omaha are very concerned about this ordinance. They have worked, I can attest to the fact, because I've worked with them for many years, they do want to address this problem. You've heard from many community groups and the police department, we're all frustrated about the theft of these metals, the copper thefts, and everything that's gone along with that. It's been a terrible crime that's perpetrated not only in Omaha but across the state of Nebraska. We are part of the solution, not part of the problem. We work very hard to try and catch these individuals. We try to work with the police department on this. We do see ways in which we could improve and amend this ordinance and deal with some of the concerns we have, but we want to begin by letting you know that we are deeply concerned about the draft that's before you. Let me start with electronic reporting, as was mentioned by David Borsec. We have been working this session with Senator Cook's bill, L B 433, which would set up a scrap theft alert system and try to get information out quickly. The real key that we find at dealing with this theft issue is quick notification. The police find out about a problem, they let the recyclers know about the problem as soon as possible, and then, when somebody comes in, we have a better chance of catching them. So, speed is the key and communication is the key, and we think that can be improved upon. This reporting requirement, if it does turn out that it's Leads Online, that becomes the person who provides the service, they have, and I will share with you, I don't have copies of this, the Business Participation Agreement from Leads Online, and let me just quickly quote it. "Reporting business," that'd be the recyclers, "hereby grants to Leads a perpetual, irrevocable, unrestricted, non-exclusive, royalty-free license to use, copy, distribute, display, reproduce, transmit, modify, and otherwise use such data." reproduce, transmit, modify, and otherwise use such data." There are some other quotes in here, I won't take more of your time, but they are able to take that information, use it as they see fit without any kind of restriction that we can tell, and that concerns us. So, we would like very much, if you do want to go forward with electronic reporting, that we have a chance to work with you to make sure that this proprietary information is held in trust, and that it is not used by others, and we think that the current, the way it works is, you require this information to be reported, then you hire somebody to transmit that information, that being Leads Online, then they come to us with this agreement. You have to report, you have to use us, you have to sign this agreement, and that's why such a broad brush is put into their agreement and agreed to in other cities, and we don't think that's fair. So, we would ask very much for you to work with us on that. We don't like holds, and I can tell you, I've worked at the state legislature lobbying, and we have all kinds of legislation at the state level, but the one thing they have not done is the holds, because it is so disruptive, as you've heard. Individuals like Jennifer and her smaller business, and the cost involved and the cash flow issues it causes are very disruptive, the space it takes. We do have a three-day hold down in Lincoln, and I did work on that, and this one is a five-day hold, and the difference between the three and five days doesn't seem like much, but let me tell you, it is a huge difference to these individuals. So, that's one concern. The amendment does deal with the larger suppliers of these materials, but there are other things, like, there's another little glitch, for instance, that, and I shouldn't say glitch, but there's another exemption that was put into Lincoln to deal with the little guy out there that goes around and picks up scrap off the street and what have you, and brings it over to the yard, and why make them go through all the fingerprinting and all the other stuff? So, we have what's called a high-value salvage collector permit that's allowed, that's not in this ordinance. That would allow that guy to come in and not have to go through this every time, and would allow, they're not a problem, they're not the thieves out there. And so, I'm just saying there are several things like that, small things maybe, but they're important to many people in the end, that we would like to work with you on. So, what we're asking for is not quick action on this, not voting on it quickly, and I know you're not going to vote today, but give us some time. And as was mentioned, we worked for months down at Lincoln, we worked for months at the state legislature to get it right, and we think that it's been an effective policy when we've done that, and we think this could be an effective policy if you'll work with this on it. With that, let me compliment you on how quickly you've moved through your agenda. We're going quickly down in the legislature to get through 34 items in about 34 minutes is unbelievable, I'm very impressed. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? I'll go ahead and close public hearing, I think we'll have some questions. I want to provide a little bit of background as to my involvement in this, and in working with the police department, and some folks in my district that are here today, and I think some questions that came up today deserve to be addressed and asked of, of some, a couple testifiers, maybe the police department will follow up here in a minute. But I think, as was said, I mean, the purpose behind this ordinance, and the need behind this ordinance, I think is to deter property crime and copper theft, increase arrests, and increase the likelihood that stolen property can be returned to its rightful owners. And I think there was two primary situations that really caught my attention on this and began my involvement with it, which is the copper theft throughout the city that we heard from otherwise very beneficial organizations like Victory Boxing, and then the College of Healing Arts, churches and cemeteries. It's a big issue that needs to be addressed, and it's a big frustration, I think, for businesses across the city, and other property owners too. But then secondarily, it's the neighborhood theft and property crime, burglaries in my neighborhood, I know in others, every district, where a theft occurs, maybe a police report is done, but there's frustration at the perceived lack of follow-up on those items, whether they're electronics or jewelry, or what have you stolen out of their home. And I think part of that is a manpower issue with the number of officers we have, but I think a big part of it is the data. We don't have the data to follow up, and this addresses that situation to, and I think is supported strongly by neighborhoods because of that. So, last fall, I did attend the meeting that Ms. Genton described in my district in Florence, and it was very well attended, as she said, and the police department was there, which we appreciated, and the prosecutor's office, and I've been working with them ever since on this idea. And it's clear to me, the police believe strongly that electronic tracking system is needed to do what we want to do here, and to achieve this objective, and when they showed me these paper cards they were referring to, I think it's pretty clear that something is needed to be done. Paper cards aren't going to get it done in the 21st, moving forward here in the 21st century, and I think some of the descriptions they can provide us, if council members are interested, in terms of how those cards come in and when they come in, is very hard to read, doesn't provide the data we need. And I think the industry's right. It's probably very seldom the police officer does come around and check those cards like they probably should be doing, and this would address that situation and be much more efficient for everyone involved. I want to come back to that in a minute, to sort of the manpower and the enforcement questions that were brought up, because I think those are legitimate that we should address. But also compliments Sergeant Genom from the pawn units, and Captain Newman who are here, and then Captain Kyle who was here this morning, talking about some of the technology issues, and the Leads Online possibility we're discussing, and with the data Captain Cal provided all of us, that literally thousands of law enforcement agencies are using that service right now, and it is being successful in other cities, and I think it can work here too. I want to come back to that security question too that came up, and we'll have maybe the police up here in a minute to talk about their experience with that, as well as the liability issue, which I think is also a legitimate question. So, this ordinance does two things. It would convert to electronic system for pawn and salvage, and it does establish the five-day hold period for the first time for salvage, for high salvage materials, copper, bronze, brass and aluminum, or identifiable items, things like the stolen street manholes or stolen statues out of somebody's yard, things of that nature that can be recovered. If approved, the Omaha Police Department would budget for this service and probably go for a service like Leads Online, so I do want to discuss that further, but this is a bit of an important time for them too, because they are preparing their budget to do that. It'd be provided for free to businesses, so it wouldn't cause businesses anything to participate, other than the point-of-service enhancements that were discussed, the basic digital thumbprint or digital signatures provided that you see at Walgreens and Lowe's, simple webcam equipment, things of that nature to each point-of-sale station. I've also appreciated the conversation I've had so far with this pawn and salvage operations in my district. I did visit Mrs. Jones's operation, I think it's a good one, and I also have been in conversation with the pawn representatives and Sauls, and I appreciate their support here today. I think they realize this is beneficial to them, and makes them more efficient too. And I also want to comment that this ordinance, or the need for this ordinance, is no reflection upon them, as good business owners. I think we have all good operators here, that's why they're here. I'm not sure there's a great operator everywhere, but I think I'm very complimentary of the folks I've been talking with and that are here today, in terms of their intentions with this and how they operate right now. Pawn mentioned their support for expanding this ordinance, and we've talked about that a little bit as a council, and with the city prosecutor, and the possibility, and I think the strong point they make about the possibility of expanding this to second-hand stores as well, or in the future. If what we're considering today is approved in the next few weeks, nothing goes into effect until January 1st, 2016, so we would have, we do have time to address that issue before then, or as the service goes up and is successful, and we believe it will be. In some of the salvage comments, in our interactions in the last few days, it's clear to me, there is an operational concern with what's currently on the books, and I've always said and still say, if there are operational concerns we can help address within this ordinance, we should do that, and I think we can. I think the amendment proposed does begin to do that in a substantial way. If some of the concern is the five-day holding period, and not wanting to burden regular industrial and dealer-to-dealer customers, as was mentioned, that's certainly not our intent either, and that's not what we're trying to get at with our copper theft concerns. So, the ordinance does, I think, take a pretty good, does a pretty good job of addressing that issue by excluding that holding period for industrial and commercial-type vendors, so that that wouldn't be needed, and a large shipment's coming in, causing potential space concerns, we're not be subject to this ordinance, and therefore, in my mind, address a lot of what was discussed here in terms of opposition. I think it was Ms. Jones and her communication, which I appreciated, to help us understand how they work better, that about 80% of the high-value materials coming in the door are from commercial vendors like that, and if we're saying they're exempt from this ordinance, at least in her case, that I think takes care of about 80% of the concern, or the space issues we might be talking about, and I think should be added to this ordinance as we go forward. Maybe at this point, I'll ask a police representative to come up. I had a few questions that came up that I want to get your perspective on. First is the question about other jurisdictions, so that is a viable point. We don't want to push this problem somewhere else, and it's more effective for us if everybody around us is also doing something like this in terms of addressing property crime and recovering items. I think in our conversations, Ms. Genom, you've mentioned, Sergeant Genom, you've mentioned that you've had some conversations with Council Bluffs, Carter Lake, Bellevue, and you believe, I think, that if we take this first step forward, this is a system they also would pursue and are kind of waiting for us to do that. Is that an accurate representation?
Yes, right now, the other smaller jurisdictions do look to the Omaha Police Department for most of their information of what's being sold here. They ask us to run names, maybe run material, and we're able to provide that for them, and it will really ease a burden off of the Omaha Police Department's pawn and salvage unit if we did implement a web-based program, because I do take in a number of calls every day from outside agencies, and they have expressed a great interest of when we are going to a web-based program, because they're on board, they're ready to get their information from a web-based program and not from us. We work Monday through Friday. This way, if they have an investigator that works on a Saturday, they're not going to have to wait for me to come back to get that information, they're going to have that at their fingertips on this web-based program.
So, you have some confidence in talking to other departments that they would pursue this as well in these surrounding areas?
Yes, yes. I've spoke to representatives of Bellevue and Council Bluffs and Douglas County, and they are all up for proposing something like this at their police department for it to get included into their budget as well, and they would like to know if that's something we're going to do, so that way they can go through with 2016 budget.
Okay, thank you. And then can you talk about the five-day versus three-day? Actually, I think the desire initially was 15 days, right? But we said, I'm not sure that would be feasible, and I don't think it is. Tell me about the rationale for five days versus three days like Lincoln has.
The rationale behind that was that the three-day opposed to the five-day, if somebody can go in and sell something on a Friday after myself or my detectives get off of work, so you have Friday, then you have Saturday, Sunday where we're off, and then Monday, maybe we're there, maybe it's a holiday, and we're off. So, there goes three, three-and-a-half days already, so I think that's why the five-day came in, is because if something came in on a Friday, we're not going to have a chance to look at it if it's held for just three days.
Okay. Okay, and then let's talk about data security for a little bit. Talk about your experience and your research on that with Leads Online. I know other cities have done this and had this experience, then also the question about the liability that was brought up.
Okay, I'll start with, let's use, for example, Leads Online. Right now, there are 3,200 police departments that are using Leads Online. They are using it for various things, their pawn, their salvage, their second-hand stores. As far as their security goes, if you go to their homepage, you will look at Leads Online, and they have a survey that's a quick-start business model that addresses the top 10 questions asked by businesses. And then there you'll see in the first paragraph that Leads Online states that they're the nation's largest and most trusted electronic reporting system, that they have service provided to tens of thousands of businesses. You will also see on the second page, is one of the most asked questions, it's number two on the list as a matter of fact, how secure is Leads Online's system? And in that they state, the information that you send is encrypted into their data center and has passed the SAS 70 Type II security audit. Some of you may wonder, well, what is that? It's actually a security clearance that's given by the Federal Financial Institute. When I spoke to a representative on Leads Online, they say that that security clearance, their audit, is very top-rated by financial industry. If you go to their third page, they also talk about, I heard some concerns on who sees my data, and can other stores or competitors see the information that I'm typing in about my customers? And I'll just read directly off here. They ask that question, and they state, only authorized law enforcement officials investigating crimes have access to the data on the Leads Online system. This means that no one else can see your company information, and you can't see anyone else's data either. You can only see the transactions you have sent us, and you can do so via your store monitor screen. So, to me, when I read this, it doesn't look like, if we use pawn, for example, Sauls cannot look at Mid-City's information and how much they're taking in. If you're looking at the salvage industry, Alter's isn't going to be able to look at Scrap Central's information that they're taking in, whether the items are taken in or their customer information.
Okay.
Did I cover everything?
Yeah, and somebody addressed liability this morning too. Was that you, Mr. Smallheiser, was that a question you answered this morning? Or maybe it was the police department, talking about a liability clause that can be, I think it was Captain Kyle, as it was, may not be here today, but there's a liability clause that can be analyzed and addressed in the context of whatever contract would be implemented with Leads Online. Do you recall that conversation?
I do recall that conversation, and I know that whatever web-based program we use is going to have to be approved by the city council. I don't know everything there is about Leads Online, but I can find that information out for you and let you know soon after.
Okay. Thank you. And then the last thing I had for the police department, so the question with enforcement to, both currently but then prospectively, if something like this was in effect, I think a concern, which I think is probably legitimate, is that we don't have the people checking the cards every day like we are supposed to. It's just very inefficient, I think, and don't have the manpower to do that, which I think is another point why we need to do something like this. But should we do this, what will that enforcement picture look like, and how will the unit respond to an enhanced effort?
Actually, I'd like to clear that up a little bit. We actually do hand-inspect every single card that comes through us. We check it. We also have our clerk typists who enter that information, so every serial number that's on that card is getting run through a national database, and it's going through NCIC to see if it contacts a hit. When I said we had 600 cards, you have to understand that we have to hold those cards for three years, so it does add up. So, we're not getting in 600,000 cards a year. We have to hold that many, in case we need to look at one. I'm sorry, what was the rest of that question there?
And then secondly, should this be enacted, what will the unit look like going forward, and how would the enforcement be addressed to make sure we are enforcing the law?
Well, what would be nice about that is, right now, I have the pawn salvage unit, we have two officers looking at those items. What will be nice with this, if we go to a web-based program, it's going to allow the other detectives in the Criminal Investigation Bureau to look at this information. Right now, this information is given in a transcode form. It's kind of like speaking another language, where only a few people can decipher what's being entered into the computer, and most of those people work days. So, what's going to be nice about this, this is going to be more user-friendly. The detectives are going to be able to type in things that don't have to be exact but can still catch a hit. For example, the system we're using right now has to be exact hits, not close to. The only thing that we get close to are guns, and then we follow up on those. So, what's going to be nice is, is if someone fills out a handwritten card, and it says a serial number on a watch, for instance, and it goes through, but my clerk typist deciphers the number a little bit differently, or maybe a G is a six, or a six is a G, this new web-based program should be able to catch close to, whereas right now we have to be exact. And the only way to get that information is not only run it by serial number, then the detective who looks at that, if there's a question about it, has to run it by brand and model. So, it takes a lot more work to look up one item, whereas this computer, or this web-based program's going to do a lot of that work for us, which is going to allow us to go out there more and verify and check against what's being sold at these shops compared to what's being written on these cards.
And in your view, that's the value of a holding period, because it does increase the likelihood you can the likelihood you can get out and see what's coming in and have the chance to do that?
Check things out, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I have for now. I see we have some other lights. Mr. Gernant.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would Council President entertain a question?
Sure.
Is it accurate to say that maybe thirteen, fifteen months ago, you brought this idea to the council and said that you're going to be working on it? Is that fairly accurate?
Yeah, I would say it's probably more like six months, six or eight months.
About six or eight?
Yeah.
Okay. Feels like fifteen to me. You spoke about how this all came about. Well, I'd like to share some reality. When I took, in my other life, my first precious metal theft report in 1969, we were fortunate enough through some gumshoe work to track it to a local salvage dealer and recover it. And the statement was made by the salvage dealer, would hope that someday government would come up with something, so I don't have to have the embarrassment of a cop showing up on my property. So I find it somewhat offensive that the industry comes before this elected body today and says that this thing's going too fast. From my perspective, I think we've hit just about all that we can. What I applaud the industry for, some of the things that Mr. Wesley has brought forward in regards to what is done in another city, what their industry is willing, and I believe capable of doing, that I would certainly consider. But to say this thing is going way too fast, I take offense to that. I've been working on this thing ever since, I remember when I first became a blue shirt. And now that there's some movement on it, we're going too fast. That bothers me. And thank you for taking my question, Mr. President. That's it for now.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I speak from a little different perspective, because my wife and I had our house broken into, and basically cleaned out of all of her precious metal jewelry items, as well as a VCR recorder or camcorder that had all of the firsts of our youngest daughter, who's now eighteen, by the way. And we learned through that process a number of things. One, if you're a woman, don't keep all your jewelry in your bedroom drawer, like a lot of women do, or in a conspicuous place. Hide it elsewhere. And if you do that, there's no guarantee that your house may not get destroyed anyway while they look for it in other places. But time flies, because the detective on that case was, I think it was Sergeant Aboud, and the prosecutor on that case is now the city's chief prosecutor, David Smallheiser. And what the thief did in that case was took one item that he thought was relatively small in terms of its value to pawn, and so if caught, he'd only be facing a misdemeanor with up to six months in jail. And I can't tell you the amount of stress that it caused in our house to go through that process, and with a thief who took Mr. Smallheiser right up to the point where the case was, trial was going to start, before having a plea agreement in that case, and I think it was three or four months or something, and that was what we thought we could do in that case. So we, as the victims, were given the courtesy, and I would thank you again today for doing that. But this individual commutes in from Valley or the Valley area, and other people commute in from Valley, have legitimate jobs. This particular person commutes in to break into homes all day to support his drug habit. And whether you're breaking into homes as a career burglar to steal precious jewelry and metal items or other things, or you're a meth addict trying to support your habit through breaking into people's air conditioner units and stealing copper wire from Little League or City Park power poles, or even across the river recently from the state highway lights, it's, I would think, if it's not an epidemic, or what the class categorizes an epidemic in law enforcement, it certainly is something that's significantly high, in my opinion. And as a lawyer, it's something I periodically get calls from my clients asking me what they can do. And the ones that ask me, is it true that I have to actually, if in the rare case something goes and is pawned at the pawn shop, I have to write them a check to get my stuff back? And yes, you do. There's a state law that says if they're out money on a pawn or a purchase, and you want your item back, you have to reimburse them, and hopefully you have insurance that then reimburses you for that item, minus your deductible. So as someone whose household has been the victim of this stuff, I completely agree with the need to do something. Someone who, in my legal practice, sees commercial businesses, whose businesses are just targets of scrap metal thefts, I see the need there. And I think the need is urgent to do something. Questions I have, though, is can we make this, in terms of the concerns we heard from the scrap dealers, in an improved version of what you're trying to do? And I know you, and I know you'll continue to have that conversation, Mr. President, and I know you're, dealing with you for the last five and a half years in the council, that that's something that you regularly do, so I have no doubt in my mind that that will be the case. Because if dealer-to-dealer transactions are something that aren't in there, that could be, I think that's something I heard that sounded reasonable. In terms of high-value scrapper permits or something like that, or commercial permits, that doesn't sound like an unreasonable suggestion. I hear, was it Jennifer? I hear your concern about, and others, about this fluctuation in market prices, scrap metals. So, you know, maybe the five-days versus three-days they suggested that they've worked with in other places, maybe that's something to consider, too. But in terms of the person who said, I think he's sitting in the back still, that, you know, we're spending a lot of time and effort on the back end to address something where with adequate police staffing or crime prevention that maybe we could reduce on the front end. And that is a recurring theme, it seems, on a number of topics that come before this council in recent months, so I can't disagree with you there. You know, our police staffing numbers are still below eight hundred. I think the International Chiefs of Police or U.S. Department of Justice, I forget who provides the best practices for police per thousand household population. If you use their numbers, our staffing should be at eight hundred and sixty-four. So when you're ninety officers below the recommended standard, you can't help but hear your point that you've made. When you hear about the equivalent of these people who steal scrap metal, basically chopping it up and altering the form, so how would you tell? Anyway, I hear your point there. But I think that the need, in terms of the scope of the problem, justifies the action to want to impose a regulation in this area. And we have a council president who's told me he's open to reasonable suggestions to continuing the conversation. I think he's made a pretty remarkably quick effort to try to throw something out today, so I applaud you for that, too. But someone who's gone through a piece of this, I agree with the approach and the community's need that you've heard here today, and I'm willing to support doing something in this area and look forward to the work product that you produce.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I, Mr. Wesley, would you, I just have a question on the second document. I'm just doing this, looking at more of a global. I looked at one of the comments you made on your second document that you handed us on electronic reporting. You said we ought to have a ordinance at sunsets?
That's one idea. Sometimes when you pass something new, you put a sunset on, see how it works, and then renew it or not, so.
So, I mean, is that something you're proposing?
Yeah, as an option to consider.
Okay. Well, if you can recall, you piqued my interest on this, because I think a lot of laws we have established and ordinances, every once in a while, we ought to have a sunset, because it would require us to come visit it again.
See if it's working.
See if it's working. And it would force us to revisit. That's just, that's what the question I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe one follow-up, too, that I have from some of the discussion here. Maybe I'll start with Ms. Jones, if you don't mind? And then I also want to hear from the police department on this item. So I think I agree with Councilmember Jerem's observations that there are some additional things we can do here. The dealer-to-dealer clarification, maybe we'll hear from David Smallheiser here in a minute, too, as to his impressions on that. The high-value salvage collector, I think, could be of interest. I appreciate that suggestion. But I do think we need to do the book of what's being proposed here for the reasons we cited. So my question to Ms. Jones is, to the three-day versus the five-day holding period, tell me your impressions on that. So I think the amendment proposed today, that I think makes a lot of sense to council members, in my mind, takes care of most of that issue, because what we're saying is, any of the big, large items that come in through your doors aren't subject to that hold period anyway, and that's about eighty percent of what you're dealing in, and helps you better deal with the issue of market timing and space and things of that, of those, of that nature, which I think are legitimate points. But tell me further your impression of that, as opposed to the five-day versus three-day in Lincoln, and how that, what's your impression of that is going forward?
Sure. I mean, obviously, I think three-day would be better than a five-day, if those are the two choices. It does alleviate a bit of the cash flow issue. The only problem still with that is, obviously, given the large volume of business we're doing, even with the exemption of the commercial and industrial accounts, the cumulative effect of three days, we're still, you can still tie up quite a bit of money in the inventory, holding it for even just at the three days. But obviously, I would, it'd be more preferred than a five-day hold period. And then, I guess I would just like to see if, I don't know as much about the Lincoln ordinance, the effectiveness of the three-day hold period. I would like to, I don't know if you've had any correspondence with the police department there, if there's actually been arrests, you know, made, given that there was that three-day hold period. What kind of recoveries were made then? I would be curious about those.
Okay. And so I appreciate the comment on the five-day versus three-day. So three-day, from your perspective, better than five days, but the amendment does help a lot with that situation, too. Would that be an accurate summation?
It does, it does.
Thank you. And I did talk to the Lincoln Police Chief a little bit about their ordinance, and my impression is, he feels it has been worthwhile and is, and does work, although I think his impression also is he would have preferred a much longer hold period to make it even better. But that was the compromise they agreed to, I think, three days in Lincoln. And they are not electronic. They don't, haven't pursued that part of it yet. Ms. Jenham, or Sergeant Jenham, if you would? Could you also address the three-day versus five-day interest, and how strongly the police department feels about five-day versus three-day for the purposes you're trying to achieve?
Again, for staffing purposes, we would want the five-day as opposed to three-day, or we would encourage you to consider that, only because of our staffing and the days that we work. Unlike the pawn industry or the salvage industry, their hours of operation are going to be a lot longer than what one officer works during a shift. We have an eight-hour shift. Their business is obviously open for longer than eight hours. Again, if they come in on a Friday after we have left or already went to their store to pick up the cards, that's one day gone for us, Saturday and Sunday, two more days gone for us. If Monday happens to be a holiday, there's another day gone for us. So if by chance we do find something that is identifiable, if we get in there on a Tuesday and they took that in on a Friday, it could already be gone. So that's where our concern lies in, with the three to five-day holding period.
Okay. Your concern, you might not have the time to follow up in time?
Right, or send somebody to go look at that, yes.
Okay. All right, one last question, and I think we have another light. Mr. Smallheiser, if you would, I think you helped draft most of this, and a lot of it was based on Lincoln's experience and some of their definitions and language. Do some of the things just talked about, you know, the high-value salvage collect permit and including dealer-to-dealer in this new amendment, make sense to you or comment on that?
David Smallheiser, who is a city prosecutor. There's a legitimate concern that in the business for salvage, because it's a spot market, that the hold period need not apply for those large commercial transactions. The copper and the like, the aluminum, it's not identifiable, so even if it's rarely subject of theft, and if it were subject of theft, it's nothing we can actually tie to one particular theft victim. And it would happen so rarely as to be practical, or that it would outweigh the benefits of having such a system. What is a concern is, as you noticed, Councilman, the theft of identifiable items from the yards of people, whether it's the vases, the ornaments they have, those are the things that we hope to be subject to the hold. It is those smaller items of copper and like, that contrary to Ms. Wesley's experience, the city prosecutor's experience is that it is those small individuals with the pickup trucks who operate in the middle of the night, scrapping, as they call it, breaking into homes under construction and taking those copper wires, who did that damage over in Iowa, who bring, who go into the air conditioning units. Those are the people who are the thieves. Those are, in fact, the bad people that we want to catch, and that we want to substitute the small items that we want held. So the large commercial, the dealers, the salvage dealers, as your amendment suggests, those items, we're not interested in a hold period. Those are the items that your amendment exempts.
And it would be pretty easy to add to our amendment, the dealer-to-dealer situation or some of the--
And I think that's what the term salvage dealer is intended to be, the dealer-to-dealer. It says salvage dealer. We don't have other licensing requirements for other professions, and that's why the term salvage dealer is used, because in this city, unlike Lincoln, that has other recycling dealer permits and the like, which we don't have, we use the term salvage dealer was used.
Okay. So from your perspective, that's already included in that amendment?
Yes, that's the dealer-to-dealer, because those are the people we've licensed.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Milton?
To add, I think what we could do, and what other statutes have, is why don't we just do three working days as opposed to five days? If you do three working days, and if it's brought in on a Friday, it has to be held till Tuesday, but if it's brought in on a Monday, it can go out. So if you do three working days, I think it might be the compromise everybody's looking for, and would alleviate your issue of the weekend. So other than that, I agree with this. I do think it's a necessity for the people in my district. Over the last year, we've seen a definite increase in the break-ins and burglaries and the items being stolen, so I think for the pawn shops, having this, I think, will be very helpful, and I'm glad all the pawn shops are on board with this. And I think maybe with a few tweaks to this ordinance, we could probably alleviate some of the burdens that we're creating for the salvage yard. So I don't know if you would disagree, but that might be the best way, just do three working days. With that, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Yeah, I forgot. I almost left out probably one of the most important things we heard here today. I think Mr. Rock said it was the secondhand stores that are not in this ordinance. I think Mr. Rock said it was the, the second-hand stores that are not in this ordinance, that they fear is where the new frontier of where people will shift to in order to sell the precious metals that they steal, whether by burglary or through this, the scrapping activities we talked about today. So I, I am aware of that. I do hear you and acknowledge in speaking with the council president that this is kind of a first step approach to working through the electronics before we go that direction. So, and it's not often that a police officer, I say something that makes him jump out of their seat. I hope I'm not under arrest or anything.
No, no.
Did you want to say something?
Again, since you made a comment about the second-hand shops, I would like to say thank you for making that statement. We do agree with you. We hope eventually that the second-hand shops are included, but I kind of wanted to give you a little bit of a story that goes along with second-hand shops. That actually occurred here in Omaha. We did have a, a ring of, a group of people who were going around the Midwest area that were breaking into jewelry stores and stealing items, high-value items, such as Rolex watches that are tens of thousands of dollars. I will let you know that I just got online with Leads Online and used it for a short time, and I discovered a number of hits from one person that happened upon a lot of Rolex watches. And there was a case in my head that came back of a jewelry store here where people broke in and they smashed the glass and they took a number of watches. We did look for that in our local pawn shops. We didn't see anything. But when I got on Leads Online, I saw a hit, and there was a lot of close-to-hits. But I did see a hit for one of these watches that ended up in Detroit. And it actually was a gang out of Detroit that was eventually indicted for those crimes of breaking into this Omaha jewelry store. So I just want to tell you, it is very important that second-hand eventually get involved in this because we could have solved a very violent and horrific crime series that was going on had we had this program earlier. It would have tipped us off to them a lot sooner. When we receive hits from outside agencies in our department, we contact those outside police departments to let them know that we received a hit on one of their items in one of our pawn shops. We did not receive that information, but had we had Leads Online, we would have known about it, and we could have discussed it with the FBI, who was also investigating this crime, and also let our case detectives know. So that way, it would be able to link this person with them and maybe have a conspiracy case.
Thank you. And as long as you're at the microphone, do you care to comment on the three-working day idea? Is that, I think what that, for all intents and purposes, would do is, over a weekend, it still gives you the time you would need, but I suppose it's a shorter period of time than you proposed during the week, but comment on how, the feasibility of that?
You know, and I have my cap in here with me, and when you said that, we were both shaking our heads in agreement. We do, we would go along with that idea. That's a very good idea to make it, say, three working days. And I understand that, you know, they have an issue with that, and we're willing to work with them, and any of the verbiage that's in that proposal, you know, maybe work on a little bit, like Mr. Smallheiser said, and kind of reword what high-value items are.
Yeah, I suppose there's two ways to do that. You could do with three working days, or you could say, or you could keep it the way it is and say exclude holidays and weekends, right? Same, same effect?
Whichever way the lawmakers want to make it, we'll be good with it.
Okay. Thank you. No further lights? Next item.
Appeal for bid rejection. Item number thirty-five, Mark Seven Enterprises appeals a rejection of their bid of March fourth for the Bob Carey Bridge Beat Stage Project.
Thank you. Thank you all for your testimony, too. I appreciate it. Public hearing number thirty-five is today. Proponents, please. I want to thank Mr. Santo. He's had some bad luck both this week, last week, and this week, being behind some long items, so we laid this over intentionally this week so you could come and have your public hearing today.
Well, I just appreciate the layover. It did get a little bit lengthy last week, and I had a commitment to my young children, so I do appreciate the layover.
You bet.
My name's Mark Santo. I live at eleven oh seven South Ninety-Ninth Circle. I represent Mark Seven Enterprises that is operated at forty twenty-eight Hamilton Street. Basically here, you know, to point out what I think is, I don't know. I, you know, I mean, for lack of a better term, I do all the projects that nobody else And then, let's just say that my livelihood is government contracting. wants to do. And it doesn't mean that they're bad jobs. It doesn't mean they're, you know, dirty or unsightly or unsavory or for one reason That's the only thing I do. I don't do remodeling. I don't do any work for the private sector. or another, because it was, the timeframe was too constraining for them, because the I'm one of the very few contractors that maybe, I believe I'm the only contractor logistics were more so than they, they wanted to encounter, because the liquidity damages in the city of Omaha that is exclusively dedicated to providing general construction contracting services entirely to government entities, and that includes city, state, county, might not have been a risk that they wanted to take on. I mean, I could go on and on and on, but it is inherent in government contracting. and federal. There's a certain amount of these projects that, that the contracting public are not My business model is such that I act, I've found that there's a great demand in the government interested in doing. And those are the projects that I target, and that, that is my niche, is to give the sectors for general contractors that will provide construction necessary services for public the projects that they need that are vital, essential, or desirable for their the communities. public uses, that nobody else wants to provide for them. They're essential projects that need to be done, or they're projects that benefit the And I wanted, I wanted to point that out before I go on, because it's, I mean, I, I community that need to be done, and they're all funded from taxpayer money. provide services and I, I have liaison officers that come back to me and they say, hey, man, And for whatever reason, and I could expand on that, there's a reasonable amount of projects we really appreciate what you're doing, because it's our job to do these vital, necessary that, for whatever reason, are, are, have a lot, a lot less interest to general contractors. projects for our communities. And with you and other guys like you, we're able to deliver these projects. And I think going along with that, there is, you, you have to say, why aren't these projects desirable? Why aren't other contractors pursuing, you know? I think by and large, contractors take the lowest line of fruit, and they only have enough resources to do enough thing, you know, so many things. I think it's widely known right now that we're in a very robust construction timeframe, and then we, we have to, you know, take those ebbs and flows and supply and demand. We all understand the theories behind supply and demand as well. But I've got a lot of time and resources involved in, in this particular project and all of the projects that I, that I pursue. And consequently, I was the only interested bidder on this project. I think it's a beautiful project. It's, it was an architecturally designed outdoor amphitheater. A, a very renowned architect designed it. It, it's technically challenging. It's, it had, had very aggressive time constraints, and I think it's going to give back to the community. It's at the, it's at the entrance to the Bob Carey, the bridge, which was an architectural masterpiece, beautiful piece of architecture that we're all proud of. And it, and it surrounds the spray ground at that entrance, which the community has embraced and used a lot. And I see, every time I'm down there, I see families down there walking their dogs and, and having picnics and using the spray ground when the spray ground is being used as such. And to add a outdoor amphitheater, I think's a, just a fantastic benefit to the community that the taxpayers are paying for this. And the, the only thing that I'm being told is why I can't provide this, this really nice add to our community, this is because my project was over the budget. And I do understand that budgets are necessary and that we all, unfortunately, it's a necessary evil. We have to, you know, I mean, we just have to navigate those waters. But, and, I mean, this is an invitation for bid. And being exclusively a government contractor, I can tell you that invitation to bids, yeah, I mean, we're all familiar with the process. Everybody puts their number in an envelope. We deliver it at a certain place at a certain time. They're all publicly opened and publicly read, including the budget or the engineer's estimate. Everything is, you know, nobody knows so, for advantage purposes, what anybody has, what cards they have in their hand. And at the bid opening or the public opening, everybody reads their numbers, and it begins with the budget. And if you're going to say that the only reason that I can't do this job is because I didn't meet the budget, but you don't disclose the budget, I don't think that you're really playing by your own protocols, by your own rules. And that's really what my problem is. If you would have disclosed the budget and I would have solved that budget, and I would have solved, you know, I know what I, my number was, whether your budget was accurate or not, at least you could have said, well, this was all we had in our budget. Whether it was a good budget or a bad budget, it's all we had. And everybody would have known that's all we had. And Mr. Santo's bid or Mark Seven's bid was in excess of that. I mean, I think it's reasonable that I could say, well, you know, it's unfortunate. I don't think that, I could say, I could argue that I didn't think the budget was accurate, but that's a whole nother argument for a whole nother day. I, I just don't feel that I should be disqualified on the grounds of not being within a budget when the budget was not disclosed and when it is common and customary practice for government, all government entities in the, in the invitation for bid forum to disclose that budget at the time of the bid opening.
Thank you. I'll take any other proponents that want to speak today. Any opponents that want to speak today? Public hearing's closed. Mr., or, yeah, Mr. Gray.
Let me ask you a question of Mr., Mr., Mr. Kratz. Mr. Kratz, do we ever, have we ever, or do we ever disclose an engineer's estimate before, before bids are submitted and opened?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, it's my understanding that we do not. Certainly, in Public Works, we'll create an engineer's estimate, but that is not set forth or revealed prior to an RFP. That's just simply for an internal use only.
Mr. Stube, do we in Public Works, do we ever, where a lot of our work comes from, do we ever submit to bidders an engineer's estimate prior to the bid being received and opened?
Bob Stube, Public Works, typically no. The engineer's estimate is determined, but it does not, it is not revealed until the actual bid opening.
I'll ask planning, who doesn't? Mr. Thiel, do we, that, when planning bids a job, do we, do we ever allow the engineer's estimate to be available to bidders prior to bid submission and bid opening?
James Thiel, City Planning, we do not disclose the bid estimate until after the opening occurs.
Thank you. I, I don't know how you would, I mean, I don't know how we would even think of the idea of exposing an engineer's estimate prior to a bid submission. I'm assuming that's what you're talking about, and if you're talking about something different, then I need to hear what you're talking about specifically. I'm off base, I guess.
Yes. I think there's a slight misunderstanding on your part, and the misunderstanding is not that I am asking for disclosure of the budget prior to the opening of the bids, although it's common and customary for other government entities. All of the federal government entities provide what they call a bid magnitude, which is a range, to kind of tell everybody the size of the project. Locally, UNO does that. Lincoln actually gives the entire budget. Omaha Airport Authority, OPS, that they all disclose at time of opening. But, but basically, the misunderstanding, I believe, Mr. Gray, here on your part, is I'm not asking that you ever tell me what your budget is or even what your range is prior to the bid opening, but it is common and customary in the invitation for bid format, IFB, for the very first number that is read during the bid opening process. Now, the bid has closed. Everybody that can play is already at the table. We open the envelopes. The first number that is read customarily is the engineer's estimate and/or the budget. And then all of the competitive bids that were provided on that day for that particular opportunity then follow. I believe that Mr. Buster Brown could maybe expand on that or at least confirm that.
Mr. Brown, go ahead.
Buster Brown, City Clerk. That's correct. On a given bid for Public Works projects, we get an engineer's estimate, we read that first, and then we read each of the individual bidder's amounts. We do not normally have engineer's estimates or budgets for other projects, only for engineer, only for Public Works projects. And they're done by the city, those engineer's estimates, and they're sealed and provided to us in advance. For most-
Okay, so then I, I get, I'm sorry.
For, for any projects that are done for parks or for planning, we don't get engineer's estimate normally. They're required for-
Then I guess I'm missing the argument here. I mean, you-
Well, I, I can expand on that. Part of the reason, the argument is that-
Let me try to be specific here. So, so that we're not, we're not spending a whole lot of time dealing with this. Are you, what's your concern? Is your concern that, because it seems like everything was done according to protocol. So I, I guess I'm wondering what is your argument that, because you're saying you should have known about the, the, the budget at some point in time after the bid opening? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you didn't know that? After the bid opening, did they, did you, there was no discussion of the engineer's estimate or whoever gave the estimate?
That is correct.
Okay. And what you want to do is, and what you're asking is what?
Well, I mean, first of all, the reason my bid has been rejected by the Parks and Recs Department is because it's not within their, their budget.
Well, it came in substantially over the budget. That's-
Do you know what the budget is, Mr. Gray?
I, I don't know what it was. I just know that it came, I was told that it came in substantially over the budget, but I'm sure our Parks Director can tell you what that is.
And, and that's fine. Where I'm getting with this, respectfully, is, is that to be disqualified in a public bidding environment for not being within the budget, we would have had to know what the budget is. I just, I mean, it's reasonable and rational to say, you know, this is the budget. That was your number, and you're indicating that my number was significantly higher than the budget. I don't know what the budget is. I don't know what significantly is. It could have been, you know, one percent or it could-
Is your concern that, because it seems like everything was done according to protocol? So, I, I guess I'm wondering what is your argument, that because you're saying you should have known about the, the, the budget at some point in time after the bid opening? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you didn't know that? After the bid opening, did they, did you, there was no discussion of the engineer's estimate or whoever gave the estimate?
That is correct.
Okay. And what you want to do is, and what you're asking is what?
Well, I mean, first of all, the reason my bid has been rejected by the Parks and Recs Department is because it's not within their, their budget.
Well, it came in substantially over the budget. That's-
Do you know what the budget is, Mr. Gray?
I, I don't know what it was. I just know that it came, I was told that it came in substantially over the budget, but I'm sure our Parks Director can tell you what that is.
And, and that's fine. Where I'm getting with this, respectfully, is, is that to be disqualified in a public bidding environment for not being within the budget, we would have had to know what the budget is. I just, I mean, it's reasonable and rational to say, you know, this is the budget. That was your number, and you're indicating that my number was significantly higher than the budget. I don't know what the budget is. I don't know what significantly is. It could have been, you know, 1% or it could have been 50%. We don't know that. But I'm saying, to be disqualified on the grounds of not being in the budget, it would only be fair that, I mean, I have to show you what my number is to, to win the award, and you would, it's fair and reasonable, because it's, the way it's done in all other similar environments is to show us what that number is, because in addition to that, and that's just kind of like a, another layer of this discussion, this is that state statute says that in a public bidding environment, in the event that all of the publicly read bids are opened and read, and all of the publicly read bids are in excess of the budget, that anybody in the, let's say, sideline contracting environment-
Let me ask you-
-is allowed to take that bid, that project for the budget value if requested within 15 days in writing.
Okay. I believe it was Parks that, Parks and Rec that, that initiated the bid. Did we follow protocol? Did we follow the procedures that we normally follow? Mr. Bench?
Brooke Bench, Parks and Recreation. Yes, we did.
Okay. And, and, and these are the, these are the, these are the, these are the protocols that we follow all the time?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jerem.
Mr. Santo, you just cited that there's a state law.
State statute.
What is the citation for that law?
The number?
Right.
And I, I'm working on harvesting all this information, but I, I can't tell it to you right at this moment.
Okay. Mr. Kratz, are you still with us?
Pardon?
Have you ever heard of this state law?
I have not.
State statute.
Maybe Michelle might have.
Good afternoon. Michelle Peters, Assistant City Attorney. I believe what Mr. Santos is referring to is a specific section that deals with Public Works road projects only, and I believe Mr. Stube can attest to that, that there is a, if all the bids come in over budget, then they allow for basically a period of time for them to resubmit, but that's in only very limited circumstances.
Now, what about Mr. Santo who says the bids, he has no problem with not being provided the estimate before the bids are opened, but that he believes that he should be entitled to know that bid amount of the estimate of this, that the city had developed once the bids are opened, and he further states that that's customary practice to do that, and I heard Mr. Stube and Mr. Thiel say the estimate is not provided until the bids are open. But in this case, he's saying it wasn't provided even after the bids were open.
It's been my experience in having worked with bids for over 15 years, that the only time we provide an engineer's estimate is with Public Works projects. We don't do it for parks. We don't do it for planning. We don't do it for capital improvement projects, for the police department, the fire department. It's only for Public Works projects.
Is there a legal basis for that practice?
I, I don't know. Again, only, I think because of the state statute that provides for those road projects that you have the 15 days, so I think that's why there's the obligation to provide those, that engineer estimate at the time of bid opening, but to my knowledge, there's no legal obligation for any other department to do so.
And so, what is your recommendation in terms of Mr. Santo's appeal?
I would recommend that it be denied. I think that all city projects have a clause in there that indicate that any bid can be rejected based on budgetary reasons, and this, again, according to Mr. Bench, was clearly far exceeded their budgeted amount, and I, I don't see that, that there were any protocols that were not followed, so my recommendation would be to reject this bid.
And is there anything about the public records laws that you think that if you, if a request were made, that the city would have to, or could be compelled to turn over the information he's asking for?
Under a public's records request, I'm, I'm not sure if there is any exemption for this, since there was no bid award, again, any public records that exist out there, he may be entitled to. However, of course, that might impede the public bidding process going forward if we decide to rebid this project at a later time.
I, I just want him to, if, if the position of the city legal department is to withhold the disclosure of this information, I think he's entitled to know the basis. It's only fair that if he leaves here today not knowing, and he's not going to find out, because you're not going to release the information, and we at least provide him with an explanation that says this is our rationale why you're not getting it, when he gets it in other contexts. So, would you or your department agree, if you can't, say, Mr. Kratz maybe, to provide why, an explanation why under the law, the city's not providing that information?
Yeah, Paul Kratz, City Attorney, will provide that explanation.
Okay. Well, with that understanding and with that recommendation, I would move to deny the appeal.
Just a motion and a second. I would just add, I think it is an interesting point you're making, but I think it doesn't really apply to what we have to do today, and therefore the motion. And Mr. Bench, it'd also be accurate to say, because it is over the budget item and the money that you have available to do this project, you do not intend to do the project. Right?
Brooke Bench, Parks and Recreation, not at this time. We're, we're going to do a Plan B. We're just actually pouring a pad for our entertainment that we're going to have this summer. And then we'll also, when that is not available, we're also going to put picnic tables and umbrella up for the families, too, when their kids are in the playground or in the splash ground, and then look to evaluate and reevaluate what we're going to do in the future later this fall after the season.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Rock call.
Milton? Paul? Thompson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Mr. President? The appeal is denied on a six to one vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Independent auditors report the Metropolitan Utilities District financial statement and supplemental schedule December 31st, 2014 and 13, with independent auditors' report.
Rock call.
Milton? Paul? Thompson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Mr. President?
Yes.
Placed on file. Proportion City Council Rule 70, the public hearing agenda items 37 shall be held on the third reading. Proportion City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing agenda items 38 through 39 shall be held on the second reading. One additional resolution, resolution, the appointment of Emily Longy as a visual arts teacher representative of the Public Arts Commission is hereby confirmed.
Public hearing number 40 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Rock call.
Milton? Paul? Thompson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Mr. President?
Yes.
40 is adopted seven to zero. Item 41, Chairman of the Board of Equalization reports approval of the plans of assessments with adjustments made at the regular meeting held April 7th, 2015.
Rock call.
Milton? Paul? Thompson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Mr. President?
Yes. Rock call.
Milton? Paul? Thompson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Mr. President?
Yes.
3:59 PM. We are adjourned.
Stand.